All right. Thanks, Brian, and welcome, everyone, to this December 18, 2023 meeting of the Homewood City Council. We don't have any proclamations or announcements tonight, so I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And we're going to start with an invocation from Counselor Smith, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
Bow your heads and pray with me. Dear good and gracious God, in this holy and joyous season, we have friends and neighbors who are suffering and are hurting from enormous loss. We know that only you have the power to calm storms and still angry skies. And in the midst of sadness and devastation, when we are burdened and hurting, you comfort us and give us strength. And when we, when our strength fails, you carry us. But after every storm, the break of dawn brings light and hope, and it is this hope that helps us to look forward to the joy and beauty of Christmas. In the beautiful words of Luke 2:8-13, "And there were in the same country shepherds abiding in the fields, keeping watch over their flocks by night; and lo, the angel of the Lord came upon them, and the glory of the Lord shone around them; and they were afraid. The angel said unto them, 'Fear not; for behold, I bring you good tidings of great joy, which shall be to all people; for unto you is born this day in the city of David, a Savior, which is Christ the Lord.'" And suddenly, there was a multitude of the heavenly host praising God and saying, "Glory to God in the highest and on earth, peace, goodwill toward men." Thank you for the hope of Christmas, and open our hearts to hear your good tidings of great joy. With grateful and hopeful hearts, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Smith. Mr. Seacrest, if you will, please call roll.
Yes, sir. Counselor Waltonie.
Here.
Gear.
Here.
Alamon.
Here.
Wolverton.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Nelms.
Here.
Andrus.
Here.
Harden.
Here.
President White.
Here.
All here. All right. Next, we have the reading of the minutes from our council meeting of December 11, 2023. Those are previously been distributed. I entertain a motion and a second to dispense with the reading of those minutes and for approval of the same.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Alamon, second by Ms. Nelms. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those are approved 11 to 0. Board vacancies. We, this is just a reminder that the at-large Park Board position is closing on January 8 at 4:30. And I think that's the only board vacancy matter that we have tonight. Okay, additions to the agenda. Since we had doubled up today with council, I mean with committees, I'll run through the additions that came from those meetings. All right, so all of these are going to other new business. 130923, request to amend fiscal year 2223 budgets, brought to us by Robert Brigette and Melody Salter. 141023, bid opening set for December 11 at, December 11, 2023 at 4:31 PM for Delkers Drive Sidewalk Phase 2, brought to us by Kale Smith. 011223, request to set a bid date for Re Street Sidewalk Improvements, brought to us by Kale Smith. 021223, request to authorize the mayor to execute a letter to Aldott for the addition of exterior lighting at the Greenway Phase 2 parking lot, also brought by Kale Smith. 031223, request to create and hire IT director, brought to us by J.J. Bischof and Mayor McCluskey. 041223, request to create and hire PC network technician, also brought to us by J.J. and Mayor. 051223, request for consideration to add the position of administrative supervisor to the Permits and Inspections Department, brought to us by Wyatt Pugh. 081223, request to set a public hearing for consideration of sign variances for South Point Bank at 1720 28th Avenue South, brought to us by South Point Bank and Knight Signs and Wyatt Pugh. 071023, request to set a public hearing for consideration of proposed revisions to the city's zoning ordinance. This comes to us from the Planning Commission with a 9 to 0 favorable recommendation, and is brought to us by Kale Smith. And lastly, 111123, request to consider proposed amendments to the Homewood sign ordinance, brought to us by Wyatt Pugh. So with those additions, I would enter.
Quick question.
Yes?
Just clarification. All of those items that you just mentioned would be under old business.
Old business, did I say, I don't know.
You said I need.
I apologize.
I need, that's what you meant.
Yep, old business. Thank you for the clarification. All right, so with those additions, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Waltonie, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As approved 11 to 0. There's nothing on the consent agenda tonight, so we'll go straight to old business. First item, 131123, public hearing continued from December 11, 2023 at 6:00 PM for consideration of sign variances for Hero Donuts at 1726 28th Avenue South, brought to us by the Pahakas Restaurant Group and Don Haas of signage and Wyatt Pugh. I think we've got a report from Special Issues last time?
Yes, we did.
Which was to just send it out without recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. And the public hearing is already open and was continued, and I see Mr. Haas at the podium. If you will, just tell us what, what the current version of the request is.
Okay, so we, there were two concerns about the Hero signs on the building. One of them is 93 square feet, so the architect reduced that. It's the one on the right-hand side. I'm sorry, it's the one on the left-hand side there. It was originally a big arc on the right-hand corner of the building. They reduced it down to 25 square feet to match the one that's going to be on the other side. And so they're both 25 square feet now. And then they put two murals, they added two murals, which will be vinyl graphics, the sun there and the man over there. They don't have any logos or names on them, but they add them as murals. So those are the additions and the changes in the sign package.
So, Mr. Pugh, what, what is the variance request at this point? Because I'm a little lost.
Right, so I just received this late Friday. So the, I guess that's a man carrying a big sandwich. So I know they're calling that a mural, but, but it's in connection with.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah. Yes. Okay. So anyway, it, it's an image that could be construed to be in connection with the business that's being run there. So that takes it out of the running for being a mural.
Yeah.
That's, yeah.
Well, if it's, if it's got a commercial purpose, it becomes a sign. And I, I think what Mr. Pugh is saying is the, his department's determination of that depiction would have a commercial purpose?
Yes, yes. And the way the sign.
Which then makes it fall under the ordinance as opposed to a mural that is not.
That's right.
The sign.
I don't know. I feel like I've seen that sun on other promotional stuff. Is, is that something that's, I saw that on another, on the other sign package. Is that something that's going to be on the menu or?
I don't know if it's on the menu. I know they've had it, they have a location in Trace Crossings in Hoover that has writing all over it. And the initial rendering of this had writing all day, every day, something to that slogan effect. So they eliminated that and just put the sun.
I think the sun is part of their logo, it sounds like, so.
Well.
That's a tou, that's a tough one, yeah. So you say that, that that sun is also on another store?
It is at the Hoover Trace Crossings location. It's smaller than that, but there is one there.
But it's that sun, it's that sun logo like that?
Uh, yes, but it has writing along with it, in a slogan.
You know. Yeah, the mural, the mural.
It's sort of like if you got the Nike swoosh, but it doesn't say Nike on it. I see where you're going.
That's it. That's exactly it.
Okay. Okay, so, so to come back to, to what we're, what the variance requests are, the two murals, in your determination, fall within the sign ordinance?
Yes, my, my interpretation would be that they are signs because they are recognizable logos.
So then we have a number variance?
So it would be a numbers variance. We're looking at four wall signs total. One is, one is permitted. Two of them would be in a location not, other than a storefront. And the sun and the man holding the six-foot sandwich would be a size variance, not a height variance.
All right, so we got number, location, and size.
Yes.
And the man carrying the sandwich is listed as a, it's on their bacon, taken, bake, or bacon tape, whatever it is on it. It's used as something else, some of their.
Got it. It's, it's part of their promotional materials.
Yes.
So the two actual Hero signs, is there any variance related to those at this point with the changes?
Not the signs themselves, it's just a numbers variance. So for the second Hero sign on the other side would be obviously a variance, but the size of them is compliant.
Okay. All right. So let me do this, because I feel pretty sure about the answer. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? I think I'll close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from council. I see some people sort of reaching.
I was just going to say that, so we, we discussed this in committee and then carried over last week. We kind of looked at all of them last time, and there was like a projecting sign as well, but that one is, doesn't need a variance. I'm just trying to make sure. Did we just look at everything that needs to be referenced for tonight's variances?
Yes.
Okay. There's still a projecting sign, but it's permitted, and everything's fine on it per the ordinance. And then.
The one on the front is permitted as well.
The one on the front is permitted. I forgot that, that pickup sign is also another wall sign that would require variance.
Okay, I was thinking there was something.
Yeah.
No, this is projecting, that's the projecting.
No, the projecting one says Hero.
Yeah, that's, that's it.
Yeah, that's in the back of the bill, near the back.
And that's compliant, it's permitted.
And pickup's not directional, that's not a directional sign?
It would, it is. It's directional, but the ordinance allows directional signs to be exempt if they're four square feet.
It's too big.
Or smaller. And this is about.
10 square feet.
10 square feet.
Yes, so it's either a sign variance for a directional sign or a wall variance for a wall sign, a number variance for a wall sign.
And in regards to the, what was advertised then, how many variances were in the public notice? Because I'm just wondering if, if we, looking at the murals that are in consideration, are they even really in consideration tonight? Because were they published? Or, or we, are they replacements for what was?
Yeah, we don't, we don't publish the.
Okay, okay, thanks. I just wanted to clarify that. Okay, thank you.
I mean, there are public hearings where that is a thing, but signs are not one of them, yeah. All right, any other question? Ms. Gear, I don't know if you still have one, but.
Well, I'm trying to figure out what exactly, I mean, are we voting on these all together, yes or no?
Well, so someone can make a motion to, for, for what they want to approve and what they don't.
Okay.
Before that happens, I'll, I'll give my opinion, but if anyone else wants to talk, I didn't want to cut them off. I can live with the second Hero sign, even though I, I'm getting to the point now where I just want to say no to all sign variances, as we talked about in committee tonight. But given the consistency with what's been done on the same sort of property and what's currently being requested on it, I, I could live with a second Hero sign. The murals, having, having two extra wall signs for that and the extra directional sign for three extra wall signs, I personally don't see the need for those. And the, that would, that would take care of the location, the location variance as well and the size variance. But it, it just seems to me that if you're looking for Hero Donuts, those two Hero signs probably, probably get you there. So, so anyway, that's, that's my personal opinion. And like I said, I'm getting really close to just saying you can have the sign that the variance allow, I mean, that the ordinance allows and be done with it, but with all these requests, but, but that's, that's my thing.
I would like to see us stick with just the signs that are allowed, mainly because I think it's a lovely building. I think Hero's great. I think, I don't think it's going to hurt them at all for us to not allow the extra variances. And if I thought it was going to hurt them in any way, I would, you know, be thinking about it a little bit harder. But I think that the community loves them. I think they're in a great new location. I think that's going to draw even more business to them. And I just don't particularly prefer for, you know, the extra signage, because there's a lot in there, and I think it'll get really busy.
Brian, do you mind putting up the projecting sign again? I'm just trying to get my gauge on where it is in relations to those two signs.
Yeah, Luca and Hero share a courtyard, and that projecting sign that's on the left-hand photo is in the back of the Hero building.
So where are the two Hero painted signs in relation to that?
They're on the opposite end of the building, on the front of the building.
So like diagonally on the other part?
Yeah, so the, the projecting sign would be, where you see the Hero sign on the left, it would be on the opposite end of the building in the back.
Correct.
And Wyatt, you did say that for the direction, for the pickup window sign, they could just shrink that down to four feet and it would be compliant?
Yes.
As a, as a directional sign?
Yes.
I personally think that's something that would be helpful to have a sign there. Size probably doesn't, sizing down is probably fine from my perspective.
Anyone want to make a motion?
To do what? Yeah.
Yeah, so you, so you can, you can either specify which ones you want, or you can make it for everything, and we'll vote on everything. Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Alamon. We have a second.
So it was just to approve the additional Hero sign?
Correct.
Second.
Second from Ms. Smith. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is approved 11 to 0 and will be Resolution 23189. Murals are gone, the direction sign is gone, at least as, as it's drawn with that size.
Okay, got you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right, next item, 181123, public hearing set for January 8, 2024 at 6:00 PM for consideration to approve the amended development plan at 800 Lake Shore Drive for Sanford University to permit the proposed construction of a new five-story, 515-bed freshman residential residence hall comprising a total of 142,737 GSP, intended to accommodate the university's ongoing student housing needs. This comes to us with, from the Planning Commission with a vote of 8 to 0 favorable recommendation. We will carry that item over for the public hearing on January 8. All right, next item. All right, 130923, request to amend fiscal year 2223 budget, brought to us by Robert Brigette and Melody Salter. And we'll start with a report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Ms. President. The Finance Committee met at 4:30 tonight and voted 3 to 0 to approve this item.
All right, so we have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved 11 to 0 and will be Resolution 23190. Next item, 141023, bid opening set for December 11, 2023 at 4:31 PM for Delkers Drive Sidewalk Phase 2, brought to us by Kale Smith, and another report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Ms. President. The Finance Committee met, voted 4 to 0 to approve this item, awarding that to Southern Seal Coating, under budget.
All right, so we, excuse me, have another motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also 11 to 0 and will be Resolution 23191. Next item, 011223, request to set a bid date for January 8, 2024 for Re Street Sidewalk Improvements, brought to us by Kale Smith. Do you have a report, Mr. Jones, for that?
I did.
Okay.
Yes, sir, the Finance Committee met and voted to set a bid date for January the 8 at 4:30, opening them at 4:31.
All right, so we will set that bid opening date. Next item, 021223, request to authorize the mayor to execute a letter to Aldott for the addition of exterior lighting at the Greenway Phase 2 parking lot, brought to us by Kale Smith, and another report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Ms. President. The Finance Committee met, voted 4 to 0 to approve this item.
All right, so we have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to 0 and will be Resolution 23192. Next item, 031223, request to create and hire IT director, brought to us by J.J. Bischof and Mayor McCluskey, and another report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Ms. President. The Finance Committee met, voted 4 to 0 to approve this item.
All right, so we have a motion, another motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also 11 to 0 and will be Resolution 23193. Next item, 041223, request to create and hire PC network technician, brought to us by J.J. Bischof and Mayor McCluskey, and another report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Sir, Ms. President, the Finance Committee met, voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval of this item.
All right, so another motion from Finance. Any questions or comments?
I just have one quick question. J.J., during your presentation, you referenced that, about the police department for this position. Does this position serve only the police department or all departments? Okay, gotcha, great. And this position would report to the new position of IT director? Okay, thank you so much.
All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also 11 to 0 and will be Resolution 23194. Next item, 051223, request for consideration to add the position of administrative supervisor to the Permits and Inspection Department, brought to us by Wyatt Pugh, and another report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Ms. President. The Finance Committee voted 4 to 0 to approve this item.
All right, so we have another motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also 11 to 0 and will be Resolution 23195. All right, next item, 081223, request to set a public hearing for consideration of sign variances for South Point Bank at 1720 28th Avenue South, brought to us by South Point Bank and Knight Signs and Wyatt Pugh. And we'll start with a report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, the, the committee met right before this and set the bid, I mean, set the public hearing date for January the 8 at 6:00 PM and sent it out without recommendation pending that public hearing. The motion was made by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Mr. Alamon. The vote was 5 to 0.
All right, so we will set that public hearing for January 8 at 6:00 PM. All right, next item. 071023, request to set a public hearing for consideration of proposed revisions to the city's zoning ordinance. This comes to us from the Planning Commission with a 9 to 0 favorable recommendation and from Kale Smith. And we'll start with the report from PND, Ms. Andrus.
Yes, we just met this evening, and we sent this out without recommendation pending the public hearing for January the 29th. The motion was made by Counselor Nelms and seconded by Counselor Waltonie.
All right, so we will set that public hearing for January 29 at 6:00 PM. All right, next item, 111123, request to consider proposed amendments to the Homewood sign ordinance, brought to us by Wyatt Pugh, and another report from Planning and Development, Ms. Andrus.
Yes, also, we met this evening about this item, and it was sent out without recommendation pending the public hearing on January the 29th, and the motion was made by Counselor Waltonie and seconded by Counselor Nelms.
All right, so we will set that, set that public hearing for January 29 at 6:00 PM as well. All right, that brings us to the committee referral agenda. I'd entertain a motion and a second for approval of that agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Nelms. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved 11 to 0, which brings us to other new business. 121223, request to set a public hearing for consideration to approve amendment to the previously filed, to the previously approved final development plan at 8:15 Greens Springs Highway for the Edge Mixed Use Development Project intended to reflect the approved research and subdivision of the subject property's current four-acre site into two separate lots to facilitate future development. The applicant is Brian Hatcher of LBYD, and the owner is Greens Springs Development and J.J. Thomas, and this comes to us from the Planning Commission with a 5 to 0 favorable recommendation. We will set this public hearing, is this the 29th, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir.
We'll set that one for the 29th as well at 6:00 PM. So this is actually just the final development plan? Because it, no, I don't, I don't know that they. They changed the property line, it's the issue, and that's got to go back to the Planning Commission, and then the development plan will come back to us.
Got you, okay.
All right, next item, 131223, request to set a public hearing for consideration to rezone 3011 Firefighter Lane from R5 Attached Dwelling Unit District to R7 Attached Dwelling Unit District. The applicant is Shane Davis and Laura Brazil to permit the construction of a two-unit townhouse development consisting of a total of 3,647 square feet. This comes to us from the Planning Commission with a 5 to 0 favorable recommendation. We will set that public hearing, Mr. Kendrick, for the 29th as well, is that the?
Yes, sir.
Okay, for January 29 at 6:00 PM.
That's correct.
Oh, I'm sorry, they did, I'm getting my dates mixed up. They, they did that on Tuesday, so now it is coming back to us from that.
We actually met last Thursday, if it matters. We actually met just last Thursday, which was...
You met on Thursday?
Yeah, because of the Christmas parade, and then Stuart had something the following Tuesday, so we met on Thursday.
No problem.
Nothing matters, but, that is correct.
All right, last item, fourteen twelve twenty-three, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of December twelfth, twenty twenty-three through December eighteen, twenty twenty-three, brought to us by Robert Riggett, Melody Salter, Mr. Jones, is this...
Mr. Harden's last, last time.
Congratulations, Mr. Harden.
Have a chance to review everything, I've learned to do it on Saturday in case we lose power from a storm. And so I make a motion to approve the vouchers for a period of December twelfth, twenty twenty-three to December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Harden, second from Ms. Smith, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also eleven to zero and will be resolution twenty-three one ninety-six. Which brings us to the end of the agenda tonight. I know the mayor couldn't be here tonight, J. J., do you, just making sure, do you have anything? Okay, all right, so Mr. Waltoney, you're up first.
Thank you, Mr. President, I will set public safety immediately following Finance, that's at five P. M. We have one item. Besides that, I have no other comments besides Merry Christmas, hope everybody, if you're traveling, travel safe. Otherwise, and we'll see you, I guess we'll see you in the new year.
Yep, January eighth.
And this is for January...
January eighth.
Okay, so we're doing committees and council?
No, 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 yes, we're, I'm sorry, yes, we're doing committees and council on the eighth.
Okay, so...
And then we'll do committees again on the twenty-second, and then council on the twenty-ninth.
Do we need to start earlier than five?
I have.
She has two.
Yeah. I have two items.
I have one item also.
We did not... Correct. Why don't we start, if we can start at four-thirty, let's do that and just make sure. But I don't, I think it'll be, I think that should be plenty of time.
Okay.
So we'll do Finance at four-thirty, and then Public Safety right afterwards. All right, I'm sorry, Mr. Waltoney, was, you were done?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Never hurts to get it, do it twice. All right, Ms. Gier.
I don't have any announcements, but just happy holidays, everyone, see you in the new year.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alamon.
I don't have announcements, Merry Christmas.
Mr. Wolverton?
No, Public Works. Thank you to Berkeley's Streets and Public Works crew for being out there and doing everything they can to help clean up all the debris and everything that's still around town. I think it's still going to be a little while longer, but I appreciate everything they're doing. And I put out a post, hopefully people are patient, understanding, you know, if you put regular stuff and there's a mound of debris, debris is probably going to get picked up first and understandably. So just Merry Christmas to everybody and Happy New Year.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sims?
Just a couple of updates, first of all, just wanted to thank the Beautification Board and the team in Public Works for all their work on making the city look beautiful this holiday season with decorations. Second of all, just wanted to congratulate the Homewood Varsity Basketball Team. They were down in Orlando this past weekend and won three straight games and won the tournament and championship down there. They beat a team from Pennsylvania, then one from Tennessee, then one from Utah to win the championship. So congrats to the team for bringing home three wins and a plaque for being champions. Also, Jared Klein was the tournament M. V. P., so congrats to all of them.
Uh, before you go, Mr. Jones, Mr. Wolverton forgot something.
Totally forgot, just thank you guys for the sidewalks, I know Delkris is going to be happy about that, and I was pleasantly surprised to see, A, multiple bids, and B, a bid that was tremendously under budget.
There you go.
So that leaves more money in the pot for, for the rest of the city, and obviously that's a huge plus, so.
Absolutely. Mr. Jones?
So Finance will be at four-thirty, and I can't believe in that picture, anyone's taller than Charlie. But anyway, there were a few, there's a few that are taller, I cannot believe that. A good-looking group, anyway, congratulations to them and hope everyone has a Merry Christmas, that's all I have.
Ms. Smith?
I'll set Special Issues to follow Public Safety, and despite us not approving their signs, I want to thank Hero and Little Donkey and Rodney Scott, because they are providing a lunch for our city employees on Wednesday, and just very, very generous for them to do that, and very thankful for Joshua Gentry and his crew for putting that together for our employees, because they have been working very, very hard on Saturdays. Totally agree with the street guys, they've been working so hard, so much, that, and just do ask for people to be patient, because we're going to get everything picked up, but it's just going to take a little time, so that's it for me. Merry Christmas.
Ms. Nelms?
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Ms. Andrews?
I do want to set P. N. D. to follow Special Issues. I do also want to point out that there are three of us that may be watching the national championship game on the eighth, right? It is the eighth, isn't it?
I don't, I don't know.
Right, I know, okay, so Walter and Andrew, I know, right? I mean, one of the three of us is going to be...
Yeah, we're not changing that.
I know, I'm just pointing it out.
We'll go as quickly as we can.
We may go quickly.
You think Washington's going to be there?
Well, if results are like last year's bowl game.
We'll see, okay.
Somebody, at least, at least one of the teams.
Here's, here's the good news.
Yeah.
I'm betting you have a DVR.
Uh, yeah.
I think she was suggesting she might not be in town.
I do have to say two thank yous, well, I have to say three things, okay? One, I want to read this email because it's very short. Jennifer, the city of Homewood has outperformed themselves during all this mess. We just cannot believe how quickly they got home on Devon and started removing debris and clearing the road. Congrats and thank you all, so I sent that to Berkeley and to Chris Thacker. Hello, hi, over on this end of the dais, please, I'm talking. Also, Randy Hambley, I finally turned left again to go through the intersection I normally go through on the way to work. Last week I had to go the other way because it was closed. Saw that the pedestrian light at the Shades Creek Parkway and Windsor Drive was down, and, you know, mentioned it to Kale, and mentioned it to Randy, and by the time I mentioned it to Randy, it had already been fixed. So Randy's already on top of things too. And then I also wanted to have everybody make sure you go and watch Trinity's Christmas video, because our, we get a shout-out for our trash situation, which is pretty funny, honestly, so, anyway. At least I didn't put anybody's phone number or email number in there, but it is pretty darn funny. So that's all I have, Merry Christmas.
Mr. Harden?
I'm on page four of War and Peace, I'll be here a while. I do also want to put a shout-out to Berkeley and those folks, they were out Saturday. And, and, I mean, they were working, and they were working like it was a normal day. And I offered water to a couple of them, never could get them to take any of my water, but anyway. But, you know, the, I think the worst place was Barry's neighborhood, but ours came in a second. And, and, you know, there's a lot to be done, and some of it's hard work, picking up pick stuff, and anyway, I'm just grateful for them. Merry Christmas.
All right, I don't have anything tonight, so Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody. Thank you for all that, all of y'all do for the city, we appreciate you doing it for another year, and we'll see everyone next year.